I'd like to call the order. Pittsburgh School Committee meeting for Monday, October 17th. Mr. Walsh, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. First, school committee members and student reports. School Committee Chair, the mayor, attending another meeting tonight, was unable to be here. May come in later. Resource and building needs, there were no meetings. Policy Committee.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we met last Thursday. We didn't have time to put the policies that we approved onto the agenda tonight, but will be on the agenda for the next meeting. The state has changed their designation. So before, all the students that were in foster care and that were homeless were under the McKinney-Vento policy. And now they've created a new designation for students that are in foster care and a particular policy to go along with that. So we looked at the boilerplate policies for the McKinney-Vento homeless policy and for the foster care opportunities policy. They went over that, and that will be for the board's approval at the next meeting.
Thank you. Student support, Dr. Knight.
Yes, we did not have a meeting. Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair. But I met with the mayor several months ago, asking for a job description for school committee members, and he mentioned that there was none. But I understand that, you know, chapter 69, 70, and, you know, 74 and so forth of the general laws of Massachusetts will give us more or less some guidelines as to what we should do and what we can do. We did not have a meeting, so there is no report. But I am concerned, and I do want to say that I am very concerned about finding out what is being done or how the schools here in Pittsburgh are paying attention to the federal law that governs IEP and the civil law that governs 504. Because I remember there was a parent a couple, few meetings ago that mentioned something about her child with disability. And we don't want, we don't want to see any one of our students falling through the crack. We want to make sure that there's equity throughout the schools. And I did speak to Mr. Superintendent, and he said that, you know, he's going to get something together to present. But that's what I'm looking at. I'm very concerned. I want to make sure that there's equity so that the students with disability in our schools are getting the proper accommodations and modifications for the programs that they're in so that they can get that free public education that they're entitled to. So that's what I'm looking at, and thank you so much for the opportunity.
Okay. Maybe the pupil personnel director might come in.
We do have a student support subcommittee meeting scheduled for this Wednesday at 5:30, and that is on the agenda.
Correct, yes, I know about that.
And could have a report come back to the full committee?
Sure.
And for the general public?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Knight.
You're welcome.
School Personnel Committee. You received a packet today and received tonight. But in your packet, you received school year 21, 22 self-assessment from Mr. Jokla. School year 22, 23 goals based on the new strategic plan. You have a copy of the strategic plan for the Pittsburgh Public Schools for school year 22 through 25. And tonight, you also received the superintendent's evaluation rubric. You have any questions, new members on that? You can contact me, and I can go over it with you.
Certainly. When would it be due?
If, like, if you could, you know, fill it out and get it back to Central Office, to the Superintendent's Secretary, who I work with, filling out the evaluation form from all of us and compiling the superintendent's evaluation. And then I would like to then provide the results at the December 5th meeting of the school committee.
When is it due, sir?
The, in the packet? You will have one?
Yes.
Yeah, right. You fill that out. It's pretty self-explanatory.
But the due date, Pete. Looking for the due date.
Due date.
Oh, I'd like it back by November 18th.
Okay.
And then that'll give the secretary and I time to put it all together so that we can have the superintendent's evaluation results for the December 5th meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Executive Committee, there are no report. And now, Mr. Tia Kofol, our student report, thank you.
Ms. Jennifer Scott was the Assistant Principal for the freshmen at Pittsburgh High. Unfortunately, she's leaving the school for another opportunity. Currently, Mr. Craig Shalafokes is the Assistant Principal for the freshmen. The homecoming dance was a massive success this weekend. The student council and class officers successfully brought back this event, and this was the largest homecoming dance with at least 500 students. The Massachusetts Association of Student Representatives, known as MASSER, had its first delicate assembly this Saturday, which Frank and I attended. Frank and I are now officially affiliated with this organization. And lastly, the cellphone challenge continues at Pittsburgh High. This rule is that cellphones should not be present in class except for lunch and passing classes. Some students support this new rule while some oppose it. Thank you, that is all I have to say.
Thank you, Tia. Any questions?
I have a question for you. Did you say currently, cellphones aren't allowed in class?
Yes, they are not allowed in class.
So you don't allow the students to do their work via the cellphone?
No, we have Chromebooks for that. But if there's a situation where they need to use their cellphones, then yes, they may be allowed to use it. But they're not supposed to be visible in class, as of now.
And where do they put them if they?
They put them away in their bags.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tia. Approval of the minutes of the previous school committee meeting. Approval of the minutes, the regular school committee meeting of October 3rd, 2022.
Take a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Communications. No communications. At this time, public comment, public comments, I wanted two, three minutes. Anyone like it, please state your name, and if you're from Pittsburgh.
Yes, Shaquille O'Chee, Pittsburgh resident. I'm speaking on Agenda Item Number Two. At their last meeting on Thursday, the Policy Committee considered a homeless policy. First, the current preferred term is unhoused, not homeless. I would like to hear how many unhoused individuals you have spoken with when formulating this policy. Local resident Miranda Tozier-Robin, some of you may know her because she attends quite a few city meetings, has posted online about interacting, quote, "with the people under the bridge," unquote. So it's doable. Have you done it? Not advocates for the unhoused, but unhoused individuals themselves. Everyone should have a voice in setting policy. In keeping with this, a few points. Number one, you should allow public comment at subcommittee meetings, such as the Policy Committee. Number two, there is a stigma to being unhoused, which is why you shouldn't require people to provide their address to give a public comment. It's discriminatory. I'm glad to see you didn't ask me for that tonight, and hopefully this continues and is codified in your policies. Number three, a city resident has been trying for months to get the procedure to submit an Agenda Item for your meetings via citizen signature petition and can't get it from you. According to the First Amendment to the Constitution, we have the right to petition our government for a redress of grievances. You need to fix this and stop stonewalling her.
Any further public comments? Anybody on the outside?
Nope.
Okay.
My name is Janice Perez, and I have two children at Long's Joe School. And I'm very concerned with the bullying, the physical assault that's going on at this school. Bullying is understandably, it's very hard to get a handle on. I, as a parent, understand that. But my child was assaulted at Long's Joe last week. It was spotted on the cameras by Mr. Maynard, and he brought my son down to the nurse. And I went through the proper channels and emailed Mr. Pierce and Mr. Ignisi, and I was assured that Mr. Ignisi went through the proper protocols. Well, lo and behold, that child was back in school two days later after he assaulted my child bad enough to almost give him a concussion. He punched him in the back of the head five times. That's witnessed on video camera. And was back in school two days later. So my question is, where are the standardized protocols for physical assaults in our public schools? It's not a case-by-case basis. It's not this child gets that many days of suspension, and this child gets a few hours in the RLC. That's not the way this works. If any one of your children was assaulted, you would want accountability to know what was being done for your child. My child does not want to go to school. My child was assaulted by the same boy multiple times at summer camp, and now is being assaulted by him at school. And in my opinion, two days is not a proper suspension amount of time for the degree of assault that happened to my child. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. I'm also a resident of Pittsburgh. My name is Joanna.
Lower the mic a little bit, thank you.
My name is Joanna Rodriguez, and my daughter goes to Long's Joe Middle School. And on Friday, I got a call from work, from the nurse's office, stating that my daughter was hit with a blunt object on her eye, and I had to pick her up, and I had to bring her to the doctors. And I have pictures of her eye. And I was told just, when I went and picked up my child, I didn't ask if the kid got in trouble or anything. I just went, rushed to the doctors, because on my way there, I called her doctor's office, and they said they would see her. So they gave her an ointment. I had to ice it. It's pretty bruised. The inside of her eyes, bloodshot red. She didn't want to go to school this morning because of the incident. And this happened in lunchtime in the cafeteria. And I went to the school this morning, and the parents, the mother and the grandmother of the young boy that threw the object, were there. And so we had to sit down in the principal's office. So I know that the kid lost privileges to eat in the cafeteria. But I think that's the only punishment he got. And I assured my daughter that it was going to be safe for her to be in school. She was just traumatized from it, because she was just sitting down, eating her lunch, and this thing just hit her. And it was one of those desktop stress balls, so it has a hard base on it. And the doctor said that where the bruise started here, it was like this close of breaking skin. So I told her she's going to, you know, she's going to be safe, but I just wanted to share the story. I mean, as parents, we spoke to their parents, his parents, and the kid did apologize, and at least she got that. But I just want there to be, like, stronger consequences than just having the privilege to eat in the cafeteria. If you're horsing around or throwing things, like, her eye could have been damaged worse than what it is. And I just wanted to share that and just, I want my child safe while I'm at work, and I don't have to, like, worry about that. And that, I've buried a child, so I'm really, really protective. And this is my youngest one. I have two in the military, and so I'm always on, walking on eggshells, nervous when the phone rings. But this is my baby, so I just wanted to address that with you. And she's a straight A student, a good student, and never giving me a hard time. And she's in sixth grade. But thank you.
Mr. Vice President, just, I want to ask you a question. Is it okay to ask a question, or I'm not allowed to?
We don't ask questions. We can have some discussion, but I think something that should be a policy.
Sure. Certainly, sir.
Looked at the handbooks, what some of the discipline policies are. So that's. Any further speakers?
Hi, I'm Jessica Jacobson. I'm a resident of Pittsburgh. I have emailed every single one of you guys. I have been trying to figure out your policies on how to get an item on your agenda. It should not be this difficult, okay? How many of you know how many single parents go to your schools? There's a lot of us. How many have two jobs? There's a lot of us, all right? You make it very difficult to join on Zoom sometimes. We don't know if we can make it or not, and it's not readily available, the Zooms. Also, just to figure out how to get something on your agenda is extremely difficult, and it shouldn't be. Not one of you have responded to me about how to get some items on your agenda. And I don't think that's acceptable at all. There should be a policy in place so that parents can get involved, and easier to be involved. So just because we can't always show up at these meetings, it's not easy for us to get our babysitters. It's not easy for all of us to show up here. It's not, and it doesn't need to be harder, but for nobody to respond, multiple emails, multiple, multiple, multiple emails on trying to figure out how to get items on your agenda. Your policy on not being able to ask questions is kind of absurd to me. If you have a question, you should be able to definitely ask that lady. That was kind of ridiculous to me. But yeah, some of your policies need to change and make it more accessible for parents. There's a lot of single parents, a lot of parents that have two jobs, where both either in or out, it doesn't matter. But it's not easy for parents to be involved. And it's great that you have student body representatives, but a lot of us have small children. So those older children don't represent our children that are younger. And it's very, very concerning, very, very, very disappointing in all of you that you can't respond on how to add something to your agenda. So I told you guys in the email today that I was coming down expecting something on how, where's your process? Anyone? You have no process for parents to get items put on your agenda?
We do. Please don't take our silence as any kind of commentary on your issue. We're just not allowed.
You can't respond in an email?
Well, our policy can't provide a dialogue here, so.
An email? All right. Pause.
Further comments? Superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stevens. So tonight, we have a pretty deep agenda, but I'd like to start it off with the recognition of our Memorial Guidance Counselor, Crenley Rodriguez, who I had the opportunity to at least meet in Boston at a presentation at the State House almost a couple of weeks ago. With also being recognized or attending for last year's recognition was Audi Rivera. And at the ceremony at the State House, Crenley received a citation from Representative Kuchmerich. And tonight, we also have something from the city, so.
Thank you, Mr. Jokla. I'm pleased to read this tonight for the mayor. City of Pittsburgh official citation. He had hereby known to all that the City of Pittsburgh, Massachusetts, hereby offers the sincerest congratulations to Crenley Rodriguez in recognition of being honored as a 2022 Outstanding Latino Educator in Massachusetts. The entire citizenry extends its very best wishes to this memorial occasion and expresses the hope of continued good fortune given the 17th day of October, 2022, by Mayor Steven DiNatale.
It's actually on the monitors on the walls. There are a few pictures from, that they lost in, so I wonder, Mr. Thompson, if you can just kind of scroll through them, because we're taking our congratulations. So next up on our agenda is the return of the field trip to Washington, D.C. Tonight, we have Jen Fisher, who has been the coordinator of program in years past, to come up and talk about this year's trip and to make the formal ask for, actually, it would be this school year, but the next year, next year, 2023.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. I'm asking for permission to start planning our overnight field trips to Washington, D.C. for our eighth graders. This has been a games-long trip tradition. We took a little hiatus due to COVID. And we're looking for permission to plan the AMC trip for our sixth graders at both Memorial and Long's Joe Middle School for an overnight trip out of state. I can talk about both those trips. If you need more information, we're planning to go the first week in June, June 4th to the 7th. It's a Sunday to Wednesday. We'll be leaving Memorial at 6:30 in the morning, traveling to Washington, doing a tour of all the monuments. We'll be going to Arlington National Cemetery. We'll be going to also, it's a different museums, the Smithsonian's. We'll have a tour guide with us, which kind of really takes place of the classroom learning experience that goes on. They give us a ton of information. We'll be working with Capitol Tours, if given permission. And we're hoping to have at least two buses, maybe three buses of kids to go, so that would be about 150 students. The AMC trip will be for our sixth graders to continue on to do some biology and environmental studies up in the White Mountains with the AMC guides. They go hiking. They took a look at geology and different ecosystems. It's a really great trip. They'll be going, Long's Joe's booked the Tuesday after Memorial Day, and it's a three-day trip, and we're trying to book some time in Memorial now. But we've got to book it now because they fill up really quickly. Yes.
Jen, sorry to interrupt. The AMC trip did not make.
It's not on there, okay, so I'll plan out.
Only the Washington, D.C.
Okay, just, I apologize. I'll have AMC for the next school committee meeting then. But for Washington, again, I think this will be my 24th or 25th trip with the kids. I'm really excited to get it back up and running, and that the kids, hopefully we get a lot of kids that will participate. So the trip cost is $798, and we are working with the schools, the different schools to do fundraising activities. So hopefully, it will go off without a hitch, knock on wood, no COVID issues. But we really want, we want the kids to participate.
Questions, Dr. Knight?
What qualifies the eighth graders, you said, to go to the trip? What do they need in order to go to the trip?
Oh, for like, what they need to bring with them on the trip?
You said 150 students, but this is not all of the eighth graders.
Right, right.
So who gets to go and who is not going?
It's really, if the families want to pay for the trip to go, they can go. We, you know, we, the teachers do a great job working with families. We've had some teachers, actually scholarship students. We're trying to look at other options to help scholarship the kids. It's really one of those time things, you know, that we have a teacher chaperone that coordinates it for the schools, but is trying to get together and get people to work together to create, to have some sort of fundraising events. It's a big job. So it's in who's available and who can do it. It's a big-time commitment to raise money. So we're trying the best we can to get everyone to go as possible. DCF helps out families. We've had different agencies outside, you know, in the city have been very generous. So if kids really want to go, we work really hard to make sure that they go. Some families choose not to have their kids gone that far. So it's really up to the families if they want their children to participate. But we do do everything possible to make sure that kids that want to go can go.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Ms. Fisher, is the number 150, is that the cap? Or?
No, we're working with the tour company. It really isn't set in stone until February, really, when they have to book the buses.
Okay.
We're, hopefully, I've asked for Wilson Bus Tours to be our bus company. They have been outstanding. They have the best drivers. They can get around the city without any issues. We've gone with other companies where we've had the buses break down. Nothing's worse than breaking down on the highway with, you know, 50 eighth graders, you know? So Wilson has really great buses. They take great care, and the drivers are excellent. So I'm hoping, and they're a little bit more money, but they're worth every penny.
Thank you.
May I? Yes. Thank you so much for what you're doing for the students in the Pittsburgh Public School system. I really appreciate it. I just want to ask a question, a little delicate, and please don't take this personal. But based on what I heard on tonight, that students are being bullied at the school and whatever, and we're talking about eighth graders, so do you have, I can't volunteer for all those days, but do you have chaperones in place to be able to take good care of the children so that parents can be comfortable at home knowing that their child has gone to DC, which is a wonderful experience for three days or whatever the case may be? Are these things in place? Because, you know, the last thing we would like is that something happened far away from home.
Right, right.
And, you know?
So the good thing about the DC trip is we usually have a one to eight, they, we've, the tour company covers the, well, not tour company, but we have a one to 15 ratio. I like a one to 12 ratio. So the chaperones are in charge of three different, so each room has four kids in it. So each chaperone is in charge of at least two or three rooms. If they're special needs students, I have one chaperone for special needs students. Like, we've taken the pathways kids before, the learning perspective kids before. So those students that have higher needs, we make sure that they have a lower ratio, and they sit right with the tour, right with their chaperones on the bus. Our other students that can be fine on their own, they usually eight to 12 with one chaperone. And we, the rooms are, one room, two rooms of kids and a chaperone, two rooms of kids and a chaperone. We also hire a security company that comes around and checks on the kids. They're out there walking around. They leave me detailed notes in the morning. I don't usually sleep on the trip. I usually check in with the chaperone, the security team, just to make sure things are quiet. Eighth grade students are wonderful because once we tell them it's lights out, they usually fall right to sleep. We're going from the minute they get up at 7:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night. We run the kids pretty hard through Washington. We try to get as much in. We call it a taste of DC. We try to get as much in as possible, and really to keep them moving and grooving so they go to bed, and they're pretty tired by the time we're back at the hotel. Another favorite part of the trip is that we take the kids to a Major League Baseball game. So for a lot of our students, they don't ever get to step foot in Camden Yard or at the Washington, not Capitals, it's hockey.
Nationals.
Nationals, thank you. We always have a great, it's a great experience for our students to go to the Major League Baseball game. So that, they're usually, we don't usually get back to the hotels till like 10:00, 10:30 at night. But eighth graders have a lot of energy first thing in the morning, so they do a lot better than I do with lack of sleep, but it's a good trip. But we do make sure, and we do a lot of check-ins with the students. We, they can room with their friends. We set it up pretty easily so that they have someone that, we don't assign the rooms. I want the kids to room with people they're comfortable with. And I usually tell the parents, don't plan on picking out roommates right now. Eighth graders historically change friend circles by the time the school year ends, so we usually do that closer to April vacation, and we have a good sense of who's getting along with who. If we know that there's a social issue, our guidance staff is really great about keeping us aware of what's going on, and we'll put them on different buses. So we try to keep them separate. I've been very fortunate. I've been doing this trip for a long time. We have rarely had any bullying issues or kids bothering, you know? The kids are really good about telling us what's going on if there are any issues. Sometimes with siblings, we've had issues with siblings where, you know, I've had to take one of the siblings with me or... I've had to take one of the siblings with me or, you know, separate them so that they're away from each other because they were together too much. But yeah, we've had a pretty good run with, with those kinds of issues. I wouldn't be doing it this long if it was a hassle, you know, 25 years of doing this trip. I do it because I, I love seeing DC through the kids' eyes, and it's a great opportunity for our kids to get out of Pittsburgh and go see the wider world and where our government takes place and understand the role of like school committee and what the president's office does versus the House and the, and the Congress. So it's really, it's a great learning experience. It preps them for that high school curriculum so they have a sense of what they're getting into when they go to high school.
Is there an application that students need to fill out if they want to attend? Is this translated in Spanish? Because we do have a large population of Hispanic students and, you know, students of color in the community, so that everybody, it's an equitable trip for whoever, you know, would like to attend.
I'm working on that right now. I'm just having my favorite translator at Central Office just double-check my work. So we'll get that out to families. And it's an 11-page document, and one of the pages, the insurance piece, the travel insurance, I have to get from the tour company. But if any parents are watching, I really recommend if you're going to do this is to buy the $37.50 insurance. If we do have to cancel the trip, they're covered, their cost of the trip is covered other than the $125 deposit. So it's really important that parents take advantage of that trip insurance. I was never a fan of trip insurance until COVID. So I think it's worth the investment. It's just, you never know what, you never know what the spring's going to bring, so.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Jennifer?
Thank you, Jen.
You're good?
Yeah, it's been a, we started this trip 35 years ago, I mean, in 1985, we started it.
Was it 85? I couldn't remember.
1985, we started it. And it's been very successful, and the kids have been excellent. And Superintendent, I tell you, over the years, we've gotten accolades from wherever our kids, and I don't care if it's just this Washington trip. But when our kids go on trips, we hear about it that they're so well behaved. And kids are, kids in Pittsburgh, they're super kids.
Yeah, that's something to be proud of, too, because I, the kids have to wear a Washington DC T-shirt when we go to Washington because it's such a busy time down there, and a lot of school groups are there. I learned this lesson my first year after I took it over from Pete DC and Mr. Mashrally. I was going up to random kids saying, are you, what bus are you on? Are you a Pittsburgh kid? And they were like, who are you ladies? So I make them wear a Pittsburgh Public Schools shirt. And actually, one of the students at Memorial just submitted a new design for our DC shirt, which I'm very excited about because we've had the same shirt for the last 25 years. So that way, it says Pittsburgh Public Schools, and the staff wear Pittsburgh Public Schools shirts. So we've had a lot of compliments, you know, especially like at the monuments, and we really prep the kids. And the ELA teachers do an outstanding job prepping the students for the Holocaust Museum. And we, you know, they, they're ready for that. It's a really heavy morning for our students, but in the afternoon, we go to the Smithsonian's. We make it a more lighter afternoon after that. So we really try to plan for those things with the kids because.
Still mixing the kids from Memorial. So that the kids from Memorial and Long Joe mix them up so that they're, before high school, they're on same buses, I mean, we mix them up on the buses and as roommates because they're eighth graders, and most of them are going to be going to Pittsburgh High School the following year. I don't know if you've done things in the past.
Yeah, we're still, that's something, a time-honored tradition you started that we won't stop. I think it's really important to mix the kids up. Actually, we've had couples that have met on the DC trip and gotten married, so. Which is kind of funny, but yeah.
Mr. Hughes, did you have a question?
No, I just chuckled at it because my, my son is one of them on the DC trip.
Your son's going?
No, no, my son was one of the ones I met on the DC trip, and him and his wife married, so.
It's a great trip, so, yeah. We appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Okay, and lastly, remotely, we have John Bates, who's the owner's project manager for the Crocker Elementary School project, available to give a brief update on where we're at with the project and the upcoming schedule over the next few months. John, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. As he mentioned, I'm John Bates with Crocker Elementary School Project Managers. And just a brief update on the status of the Crocker Elementary School building project. Just so the committee is aware, for public projects valued at over $10 million, the state requires that we pre-qualify all general and subcontractors for the project, and that's done by an evaluation. According to a prescribed point rating system, contractors are invited to submit their qualifications, and then a review team evaluates those calls to determine whether or not they have the capacity to complete their scope of work. And then we've just completed that process. So we now have approximately 80 contractors now pre-qualified and eligible to submit bids on the Crocker Elementary School. And then meanwhile, as that process was unfolding, some architecture, the architects for your Crocker project have been working to finalize the construction documents. They're hoping to submit those documents at the end of this week, October 21st. And the intent would be that we would submit those documents and make them available on the city's procurement website for contractors on October 26th. That's next Wednesday. And after the bid documents become available, the contractors would then just have a little under two months to calculate and submit their bids and get them in before the end of the year. And after we review those bids, we would select the lowest qualified bidder for the project. And then with the contractor on board, that would mean that we begin mobilizing construction early 2023. And that would kick off a multi-phase construction process. It would start with prepping the site, providing a secured access road to the north side of the site above the Crocker Elementary School, the existing Crocker Elementary School building. And then the actual construction of the new building, which would be about a two-year process, would continue on until substantial completion in February of 2025. And then in the summer of 2025, after the building's complete, the new building's complete, we then demolish the existing Crocker building and then complete all the remaining site work. And that, that includes my high-level schedule update of the project. I do want to just say that it's been a lot of time and hard work that's gone into this, into the design of this, this new school. And I think now it's time to bring these plans to the contractors and see this project get built. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Bates? Who's this, Rosemary?
Hello, Mr. Bates. Thank you. I'm wondering if the anticipated rise of energy costs, if it's being factored in, if we have time to factor that in, that, that is a big issue?
Energy costs, in addition to material costs and labor costs, have all been a large factor this year. We all know about the way the world has gone over the last year or so. It has had a dramatic impact on the construction market. We have seen our estimates inflated as a result. Our estimators, we've had two involved in this project for several years now, and they have taken into account all, all of the, the estimated escalation and inflation to the, to the degree possible. These are just estimates. They're not hard bits. But yes, to answer your question, we have done our best to try to factor those, those inflation costs in.
Mr. Chairman, quick question. So is the design process from our approval finalized? If it's going out to, if it's about to go out to contractors, design's finalized?
Yeah, yeah. We, there was a Crocker School Building Committee meeting last week where the committee voted to send the 100% construction documents up to bid.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
And we also identified alternates to add if the bidding environment is, is positive.
Understood.
All set?
All set.
All right, action items.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
All set.
Action items, I'd like to change the action item. That's how it's read. I would like to, if I could, have somebody make a motion to approve. Approve the superintendent's recommendation to allow the Memorial Middle School and Long Joe Middle School to plan a four-day trip to Washington, D.C.
Most to accept, most to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Executive session not at this time. Motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.